Council, come for order. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, the true republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in all.
Thank you. Okay. We have a lot of great citizens and employees to honor tonight. And first will be a resolution about our Citizens Police Academy. Whereas Plymouth Township Police Department, in its continuing effort to forge strong and lasting bonds with the community, initiated a Citizens Police Academy. And whereas eight members of our community rose to the challenge of this 10-week hands-on course of study. And whereas between the 14th of March 2024 and the 13th of May 2024, Citizens Academy students completed an intense course of study, including patrol activities, criminal investigation, traffic safety and crash investigation, forensics, first aid, use of force, and firearm safety. And whereas the Plymouth Township Police Department is grateful for the dedication and enthusiasm demonstrated by this graduating class of the Citizens Police Academy, now therefore be it resolved that Carol Cromie, Hoshel Dear, Jim Fergus, Judy Glynn, Relene Guanzon, Ronella Guanzon, Greg Kupanouski, Deborah Romano, Dominic Romano, Rita Stoll, Ashatosh Upadhyay, and Adam Wilkie Visio are hereby commended for their successful completion of the Plymouth Township Citizens Police Academy. Be it further resolved that this resolution be entered on the official minutes of Plymouth Township, and that a copy of this resolution be publicly tendered to each member of this graduating class, adopted this 13th day of May 2024 Plymouth Township Council. I want to thank everybody for your dedication and the effort you put into doing this. I think it's a really important service that our police perform for the citizens, and that you get to know just how hard our police officers all work. Are there any questions or comments from council? I make a motion that this resolution be entered in the official minutes of Plymouth Township. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Ms. Visio. Any questions or comments? Any questions or comments from the audience? All right. Well, I want to thank all of you, and we have copies of the resolution to present.
You need to take roll call, call the vote, roll for the resolution. A roll call vote.
I made a motion that was voted on.
Okay, everyone, all those in favor? I'm sorry, I'm not used to this for a resolution. All those in favor?
Mr. Nelson.
Mr. Whitney?
In favor.
Ms. Visio? In favor. Ms. Leonard?
In favor.
Mr. Nelson?
In favor.
And the chair votes in favor.
Great.
Pass. Thank you. So if you all come forward, all of you who are here tonight, we'll give you a copy of it. On up. Huh? Yeah, stay up here. You can stand next to him.
You know her?
Congratulations.
Congratulations.
Tell me what they saw.
Congratulations. Congratulations.
That's all.
Can we get everybody to come in here like a team, bros? That's right. We're not trying to pick anybody out of the lineup. Where's Mama? Get Mama. There you go. There you go. Wonderful. Right on me, one, two, three. Beautiful. Good job. Congratulations.
Any public comment tonight on the agenda? All right. Next, we have another resolution, 20 Years of Service Resolution, be read by Mr. Whitney.
30 years? All right. Whereas Peter D. Alessandro has served the Plymouth Township Buildings and Grounds Department faithfully since May 9, 1994, and has therefore completed 30 years of service. And whereas Plymouth Township Council desires to formally recognize the diligent and valuable service rendered by Peter D. Alessandro and publicly express its appreciation, now therefore be it resolved that Peter D. Alessandro is congratulated for completion of 30 years of service with the Plymouth Township Buildings and Grounds Department, and be it further resolved that this resolution be entered in the official minutes of Plymouth Township, and that a copy of this resolution be publicly tendered to Peter D. Alessandro, adopted this 13th day of May, AD 2024. Karen R. Bramlett, Chair. I would make a motion that we accept this resolution.
Motion by Mr. Whitney. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Nelson. Any questions or comments by council?
I will say that Peter couldn't be here tonight, but I've known him forever, basically. And the work that he does for the township and the entire grounds department does for this township can't be described. It's unmatched compared to any other. So we thank him for 30 years and hope to have him for as many more as we can.
I agree. Our Public Works Department is without match anywhere. Any questions or comments from the public? By hearing now, we'll take a roll call vote. Mr. Whitney?
In favor.
Mr. Nelson?
In favor.
Ms. Leonard?
In favor.
Ms. Visio?
In favor.
And the chair votes in favor. And whoever you are, Peter Alessandro, congratulations. Okay. I have some announcements to make. That Plymouth Council held an executive session on May 6, 2024, and an executive session will be held following this meeting, May 13, 2024. All right. Is there a motion to approve the minutes of the workshop meeting and regular meeting, April 8 and April 15, 2024?
So moved.
Motion by Mr. Whitney. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Ms. Visio. Any comments? Counsel or the audience? All right, hearing now, we'll take a roll call vote. Mr. Nelson?
In favor.
Ms. Leonard?
In favor.
Ms. Visio?
In favor.
Mr. Whitney?
In favor.
And the chair votes in favor. All right. Approval of the departmental reports and bills. Have a motion to approve those, please.
So moved.
Motion by Mr. Whitney. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Nelson. We'll take a roll call vote. Ms. Visio?
In favor.
Ms. Leonard?
In favor.
Mr. Nelson?
In favor.
Mr. Whitney?
In favor.
And the chair votes in favor. All right. An announcement that we will be hosting a town hall this month, May 29, at 7:00 p.m., here at the GPCC. And the purpose of the town hall will be to discuss a proposed plastic bag ordinance. So anybody who has comments, questions, or wants to contribute to the discussion, you're very welcome to be here on May 29. We'll talk about a plastic bag ordinance. All right. Under Police and Public Safety, Mr. Nelson, National Police Week Resolution.
We have a resolution. Whereas the Congress of the United States of America has designated the week of May 12 through the 18th, 2024, as National Police Week. And whereas Plymouth Township desires to honor the valor, service, and dedication of its own police officers, now therefore be it resolved that Plymouth Township Council hereby proclaims the week of May 12 through the 18th, 2024, to be Police Week, and calls upon all citizens in this community to especially honor and show their sincere appreciation for the police officers of this township. Be it further resolved that Plymouth Township Council likewise expresses its gratitude to the men and women in uniform who uphold the law, safeguard the citizenry, and make Plymouth Township a desirable place in which to live and work, adopted this 13th day of May, 2024. I will move to accept this resolution, or this, yeah, resolution.
All right. Motion by Mr. Nelson. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Ms. Visio. Any questions or comments by council? Questions or comments from the audience? All right. I am so happy to see so many of our officers here tonight. To honor them this week, a National Police Week Resolution. We'll take a roll call vote. Ms. Visio?
In favor.
Ms. Leonard?
In favor.
Mr. Nelson?
In favor.
Mr. Whitney?
In favor.
And the chair votes in favor. Congratulations and thank you. I have a presentation of the resolution to...
Yeah, the flag. Does that, any officers want to come up and take a photo with us?
There we go. There we go. Big smile there, buddy. Sorry. Beautiful. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Next, we have Officer of the Year Resolution. Ms. Visio?
Thank you, Ms. Chair. I have a resolution acknowledging the Police Officer of the Year for 2023. Whereas Detective Andrew Moretti has performed diligently and faithfully the duties and services required of him by the Township of Plymouth. And whereas the performance of Detective Andrew Moretti was in the highest standard of the law enforcement profession. And whereas a vote has been taken by the Police Department Supervisory Staff to recognize Detective Andrew Moretti and his outstanding contributions. Now therefore be it resolved that Detective Andrew Moretti is hereby commended for his diligent and valuable service. Be it further resolved that this resolution be entered on the official minutes of Plymouth Township, and that a copy of this resolution be publicly tendered to Detective Andrew Moretti, adopted this 13th day of May, 2024 Plymouth Township Council. I make a motion that we adopt this resolution.
Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Whitney. Any questions or comments by council, the chief?
Yes, I'd like to say something. Tomorrow marks Detective Andrew Moretti's 22-year anniversary with the Plymouth Township Police Department. He served in the Patrol Division and Highway Patrol Unit before being assigned to the Detective Division in 2010. He has exhibited unmasked expertise in our technological investigations while concurrently serving as a commander on a major incident response team, an instructor for the county's Emergency Vehicle Operators Course, a reconstructionist for serious accident investigation, as well as a seasoned drug task force member. While it remains difficult to distinguish oneself when viewed alongside an array of dedicated and accomplished Plymouth Township police officers, Detective Moretti has demonstrated an enduring commitment to excellence in the policing profession. I am proud of all the men and women of our renowned organization, and Detective Moretti serves as a shining example of what makes the Plymouth Township Police Department a remarkable public service agency. I introduce the Plymouth Township Council and our guest here this evening, 2023's Police Officer of the Year, Detective Andrew Moretti. Thanks.
We have to vote. Win. We have to vote.
Any comments or questions from the audience? All right, we'll take a roll call vote. Ms. Visio?
In favor.
Mr. Whitney?
In favor.
Ms. Leonard?
In favor.
Mr. Nelson?
In favor.
And the chair votes in favor.
Big smile. All have a special memory.
Move a little down. Move a little down. Professional here.
Good job.
Okay. Next, under Public Safety, we have Harmanville Fire Company RACP Grant Resolution. Mr. Nelson?
The resolution of the Council of Plymouth Township of Montgomery County, Pennsylvania, to recognize the Harmanville Fire Company Number One Station rebuild is funded by Plymouth Township in conjunction with the Redevelopment Assistance Capital Program grant funding. Whereas the Harmanville Fire Company Number One was awarded a grant from the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania Office of Budget of Redevelopment Assistant Capital Program, RACP funding. Such funding supports the demolition of the existing station too, and construction of a new firehouse with the ability to drive through the building. And whereas the Governor's Office of the Budget authorized a release of $1,975,000 for this RACP project under the Capital Budget Project Itemization Act. And whereas the current total project cost of the fire station rebuild is $3,975,000, using $1,975,000 of the RACP grant and $2 million of local match support. Now be it resolved that the Plymouth Township Council approves the availability of $2 million held in the Wells Fargo Bank account to serve as local matching fund support for the RACP project. Witness that whereas the Plymouth Township Council adopted this resolution in the law session this 13th day of May, 2024, I will adopt this resolution.
Mr. Second?
Second.
Second by Ms. Leonard. Any questions or comments by council? Questions or comments from the audience? Hearing now, we'll take a roll call vote. Ms. Leonard?
In favor.
Mr. Nelson?
In favor.
Mr. Whitney?
In favor.
Ms. Visio?
In favor.
And the chair votes in favor. Okay. Next, Chief, would you like to say a few words about K-9 Officer Eros?
Yes, thank you. Before we honor K-9 Eros, I would ask his partner, Officer Mike Watts, to join me up front. It's with fond memories and great sorrow that the Plymouth Township Police Department recalls the passing of K-9 Officer Eros. Eros faithfully served our community for over seven years in both patrol operations and narcotics detection. In addition to his love for our community, K-9 Eros was responsible for the discovery and apprehension of multiple suspects during his career. During his early service years, Eros partnered with Officer Scott Severson, while for the past several years, he faithfully served alongside Officer Michael Watts. In the midst of their mourning, we offer Officer Watts and Officer Severson our comfort, compassion, and strength. It's not just those with two legs who were born with the soul that had the courage to wear the badge. Thank you for your service, Eros, and rest in peace. I would like to offer Officer Watts the opportunity to say a few words.
I don't really have anything written. But I feel like I was just here standing in front of some of you. My last partner, K-9 Major, passed away about three years ago. So it's kind of deja vu. But Eros served faithfully with myself and Officer Severson. He was definitely fast, but he's pain-free now. And he was a great partner. But yeah, thank you to council, the township, and the chief for continuing the K-9 program. Thank you for having me tonight and honoring me. I really appreciate it.
Thank you, Officer Watts. I know the K-9 officers are very special and form a special bond with their handlers, you and Officer Severson, but also they give their all, like all canines do, but K-9 officers even more so. So thank you.
Thanks so much.
Chief, did you have any other words that you wanted to share tonight?
I would just like to say, I think I mentioned it with Officer Moretti, but I think these guys know, the men and women of the Police Department, how much I respect them, how much the community respects them, needs them, appreciates them. And this is just one week of the year that we take the opportunity to thank them for their service, but every single day, you're very much appreciated. I mean, I said it when I made chief, and it's still true to this day. You're all my heroes. I'm very grateful for all. So thank you.
Thank you, Chief, for those words. Thank you very much. Is there anything else tonight, Chief?
No, that's all I have. Thank you.
All right. Next, we'll move on to Public Works. And the month of May, we also honor our Public Works employees during National Public Works Week. Ms. Leonard?
I have a resolution for National Public Works Week. Whereas the services provided in Plymouth Township are an integral part of residents' everyday lives. And whereas the health, safety, comfort, and quality of life for Plymouth Township residents greatly depends on these facilities and services. And whereas the members of the Plymouth Township Public Works Department are vital to the efficient operation and maintenance of township programs, including sanitary and storm sewers, streets, snow removal, solid waste and recycling collection, parks, buildings, township grounds, and township vehicles. And whereas the quality and effectiveness of these facilities and services, as well as their planning, design, and construction, are vitally dependent upon the efforts and skill of public works personnel. Now therefore be it resolved that in recognition of National Public Works Week, May 19 through 25, 2024, all members of the Public Works Department be commended for their performance. And be it further resolved that this resolution be entered into the official minutes of Plymouth Township, and that a copy of this resolution be publicly tendered to the Public Works Department, adopted this 13th day of May, 2024. I move that we adopt this resolution.
Motion by Ms. Leonard. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Ms. Visio. Any questions or comments from council? Questions or comments from the audience? I think everybody in Plymouth Township knows how highly our Public Works employees are regarded throughout the township. And we are always getting commendation letters and emails and notes from residents. So thank all of you. We'll have a roll call vote. Mr. Whitney?
In favor.
Mr. Nelson?
In favor.
Ms. Leonard?
In favor.
Ms. Visio?
In favor.
And the chair votes in favor. Thank you all. Okay. I want to thank all of the officers and Public Works employees, and everybody who came out to celebrate our fantastic employees. If you all want to leave before we get to the drier parts of the meeting, you're certainly welcome. We do not hold it against you, but we also invite you to stay for the drier parts. Oh, yes, Karen. That's fantastic. Next, under Public Works, we have a street paving bid award of the... Bids were opened on April 26, 2024. We had nine bidders for this project for street paving. And the low bid that came in was by Glasgow Incorporated for $230,540. And the township has worked before with Glasgow Incorporated. So we appreciate their work, and we're happy to accept this low bid. This, the bids will come out of our Liquid Fuels and General Fund and also out of a bond. So I would like to... We don't need, do we need a motion before we vote? Okay. I'd like to make a motion that we award this bid, $230,540, to Glasgow Incorporated. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Whitney. Any questions or comments from council? Or from our audience? Hearing now, we'll take a roll call vote. Ms. Visio?
In favor.
Ms. Leonard?
In favor.
Mr. Nelson?
In favor.
Mr. Whitney?
In favor.
And the chair votes in favor. All right. Next, we have a proposed agreement from USIC. Ms. Visio?
Thank you. I have an agreement from USIC locating services. They provide the marking, locating and marking of underground utilities like sewer and electric. They are highly credentialed in this field. And we have a contract, a one-year contract between the township and this group to provide services to us. I would make a motion at this time that we accept this contract.
All right. Motion by Ms. Visio. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Nelson. Any questions or comments from council or from the public? By hearing now, we'll take a roll call vote. Ms. Visio?
In favor.
Ms. Leonard?
In favor.
Mr. Nelson?
In favor.
Mr. Whitney?
In favor.
And the chair votes in favor.
Nothing tonight.
Nothing tonight. You anticipate, thank you. Good to hear. One of these days, you're going to have something really big to... One of these days, you're going to have something really big to spring on us. All right. Thank you for that. All right. Under subdivision and land development, Mr. Whitney?
All right. I have a letter here regarding the Land Development Plan 17-12, Connaughtelli Auto Group at 906 Ridge Pike. Connaughtelli Auto Group is requesting to withdraw from the above-mentioned land development plan, and I would make a motion that we grant that request.
All right. Motion from Mr. Whitney. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Ms. Leonard. Any questions or comments from council or from the public? Hearing them will take a roll call vote. Mr. Whitney, sorry.
In favor.
Ms. Visio?
In favor.
Ms. Leonard?
In favor.
Mr. Nelson?
In favor.
And the chair votes in favor. All right. Next, by Ms. Visio, please.
Thank you, Ms. Chair. I have a letter from Jenna Casman, representing Plymouth Meeting KPG 3 LLC, an entity affiliated with Keystone Property Group, regarding the property on 502 West Germantown Pike. At this time, KPG agrees to extend the deadline, but when the township must render a decision on their pending subdivision and land development application, that extension would be through June 30, 2024, and I make a motion that we accept this extension.
All right. Motion by Ms. Visio. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Whitney. Any questions or comments from council, questions or comments from the audience? Hearing them will take a roll call vote. Ms. Visio?
In favor.
Mr. Whitney?
In favor.
Mr. Nelson?
In favor.
Ms. Leonard?
In favor.
And the chair votes in favor. All right. Next, by Mr. Nelson, please.
I have an email here from a John Murphy, who is from Alpha Consulting Engineers. And he is, the letter is regarding Land Development 23-2, the Outback State House Rebuild at 322 Ridge Pike. He is requesting a deadline extension until June 30, 2024. I would like to make a motion to accept that extension.
All right. Motion by Mr. Nelson. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Whitney. Any questions or comments from council, from the public? Hearing them will take a roll call vote. Mr. Nelson?
In favor.
Mr. Whitney?
In favor.
Ms. Leonard?
In favor.
Ms. Visio?
In favor.
And the chair votes in favor. All right. Another request. Mr. Nelson?
I have a letter here from a Peter Karakalian in regards to the Land Development 24-2 at 416 Ridge Pike. It's the Ridge Pike Car Wash. And they are also requesting an extension until June 28 or June 30, 2024. And I still move to grant that extension.
Motion by Mr. Nelson. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Whitney. Any questions, comments from council, from the public? Hearing them will take a roll call vote. Mr. Nelson?
In favor.
Ms. Leonard?
In favor.
Ms. Visio?
In favor.
Mr. Whitney?
In favor.
And the chair votes in favor. All right. Unconditionally approved projects not yet recorded. Mr. Whitney?
All right. In regards to the application of two farms, otherwise known as Royal Farms, at 906 Ridge Pike, I have a letter from Neil Stein asking for an extension to the date of August 28, 2024. I would make a motion that we grant this extension.
Motion by Mr. Whitney. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Ms. Visio. Any questions, comments from council or from the public? Hearing them will take a roll call vote. Mr. Whitney?
In favor.
Ms. Visio?
In favor.
Ms. Leonard?
In favor.
Mr. Nelson?
In favor.
And the chair votes in favor. All right. Next, under projects under construction, an escrow release. Ms. Leonard?
I have a letter here from Lonnie Manai to Karen Weiss at Plymouth Township. At this time, based on field observations and work completed to date, they find that sufficient work has been completed to release the amount of $52,233.04. By releasing this amount, the total account balance for the project will be reduced to Do I need to say all of this? Original value of financial security, $1,006,513.20. Total past completion, $506,277. Total completed this release? Balance to finish, $448,003.16.
Do you want to motion?
I make a motion to release this escrow.
All right. Motion by Ms. Leonard. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Whitney. Any questions or comments from council or from the public? Hearing them will take a roll call vote. Ms. Leonard?
In favor.
Ms. Visio?
In favor.
Mr. Whitney?
In favor.
Mr. Nelson?
In favor.
And the chair votes in favor. Next, under zoning, an announcement of upcoming zoning hearings by Ms. Visio.
Thank you. The zoning hearing board of Plymouth Township will hold a public hearing on Monday, May 20, 2024, commencing at 7:00 PM in the Greater Plymouth Community Center at 2910 Jolly Road in Plymouth Meeting. The following applications will be heard. Number one, Leslie Heller &amp; Hopper Trust on an application for variance from Plymouth Township Zoning Ordinance 342 as amended Article 19, Section 1909E. The variance requested is as follows: To erect a four-foot-tall fence 22 feet from the setback where 50 feet is required off of Hickory Road in a historical picket style. This property is located at 2368 Hickory Road in a double-A residential zoning district. The second is Brixmore Plymouth Square LLC on an application for variance from Plymouth Township Zoning Ordinance 342 as amended Article 16, Section 1601.D2C. The variance requested is as follows: To permit individual tenant wall sign of 94.25 square feet where 53 square feet is permitted. This property is located at 200 Ridge Pike in Shopping Center Zoning District. The third is Home Depot Katie Fitzgerald on an application for variances from Plymouth Township Zoning Ordinance Number 342 as amended Article 37, Section 3710A. The variance requested are as follows: We are asking for a parking reduction of 41 spaces. Thus, we are requesting variance of 41 spaces to allow outdoor storage on-site. It is understood there was a previous variance that allowed for 15 spaces to be utilized for rentals. We wish to reallocate these spaces toward this variance. This property is located at 200 Allen Wood Road in a business park zoning district. Any citizen of Plymouth Township or interested party may attend the public hearing and have an opportunity to be heard.
Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Visio. Under Poxon Recreation, I would like to announce some of the upcoming events. Summer Day Camp and One Week Specialty Camp Registration is open now. A program, Pound Unplugged, will be Monday, June 3. Build a Boat at Our Pool, Sunday, May 19. Potluck Bingo, Thursday, June 13. Community Yod Sale that will be held at the Montgomery County Community College Saturday, June 15. We're going to be starting our outdoor movie series with Super Mario Brothers Wednesday, June 19. There will be a concert by the Funkin' Soulnuts Wednesday, June 26. Our movie, Migration, will be Wednesday, July 3. Save the Date National Night Out, which is always a great time with our police force, will be Tuesday, August 6. And we are always looking for sponsors for our movies and concerts. All right. Next announcement under Poxon Recreation, Mr. Whitney?
All right. Plymouth Township Day 2024 is coming up. It will be held on Saturday, June 1, from 10:00 AM to 2:00 PM at East Plymouth Valley Park. Some of the stuff we're going to have there going on, I'm very excited about. Members of the 501st Legion are going to be there. They're the Star Wars cosplayers with absolutely stunning armor. It's really, really cool.
Cosplayers?
Mm-hmm. There will be inflatables. You can pre-purchase a wristband and save. There will be community groups, crafts, and local businesses, all with their stands out. Plymouth Little League concession stand, the street-side barbecue food truck, which is delicious. I get that every time. Remote control monster trucks, mini golf. Is that new this year? It doesn't say it, but I think that's new this year. Which is exciting, because that's fun. Petting zoo, which is new, and a Bago tournament. So I'd assume you need to get there a little earlier if you would like to sign up for the Bago tournament.
I think you actually have to sign up like...
Pre-sign up.
Pre-sign up.
Yeah. If you wait till that day, I think you're going to lose your spot.
There we go. So yeah, if you want to play in the Bago tournament, best to reach out. And you can find details or reach out in our brochure, on the app, on the website, on social media, or by calling 610-277-4312. And if you want that wristband to save a little bit of money, purchase it here at the Greater Plymouth Community Center before May 31.
All right. And practice the Bago, because Ms. Visio's sons will be there.
Well, I'm signed up to him real bad, too. I guess I should start practicing.
Yeah, cornhole. Another word for cornhole. All right. And then I think, until we get closer to the date, this will be the last time we're announcing to save the date for April 5, 2025, the GPCC 25th Anniversary Celebration, and that will be on a Saturday. Next, we have a grant resolution to be read by Mr. Whitney.
All right. Be it resolved that the Plymouth Township of Montgomery County hereby requests a Greenways, Trails, and Recreation Program grant of $250,000 from the Commonwealth Financing Authority to be used for the proposed improvement within John F. Kennedy Park, i.e. field improvements, playground upgrades, parking lot expansion. Be it further resolved that the applicant, Plymouth Township, does hereby designate Karen Weiss, Township Manager, as the official to execute all documents and agreements between Plymouth Township and the Commonwealth Financing Authority to facilitate and assist in obtaining the requested grant. I would make a motion that we approve this resolution.
Motion by Mr. Whitney. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Nelson. Any questions or comments from council? Any from our audience? Hearing them will take a roll call vote. Mr. Whitney?
In favor.
Ms. Visio?
In favor.
Ms. Leonard?
In favor.
Mr. Nelson?
In favor.
And the chair votes in favor. All right. We have an announcement of our citizen board vacancies by Ms. Leonard.
All residents wishing to serve on these citizens boards are asked to submit their resume or a letter stating their interest to the Township Manager at 700 Bell Bar Road, Plymouth Meeting, PA 19462, or via email to kweiss@plimmethouship.org. The following citizen board positions are currently open. Property Maintenance Code Appeals Board, three positions open. Historical Architecture Review Board, one position open. Human Relations Commission, one position open. Civil Service Commission, one position open.
All right. Thank you. And any residents, you know, please let us know if you want to, or let Ms. Weiss know if you want to serve. We do have an appointment for one of our vacancies. Ms. Visio?
Thank you. We have a resident, her name is Franny Morion, who is interested and willing to serve as the zoning hearing board alternate. I personally know Franny. She is a great person. She's a longtime Plymouth resident. She's eager to serve. I think she'll do a great job, and I would nominate her for it as well.
All right. We have a nomination. Do we need a second? All right. Is there a second on this nomination of Ms. Morion?
Second.
Second by Mr. Whitney. Any questions or comments from council or from the public? Hearing them will take a roll call vote. Ms. Visio?
In favor.
Mr. Whitney?
In favor.
Ms. Leonard?
In favor.
Mr. Nelson?
In favor.
And the chair votes in favor. All right. This is the time for any audience participation. Sure, you could come up and just give us your name, and if you live in Plymouth or somewhere else. And just close enough so that your voice can be heard by this speaker. Well, it needs to be recorded.
It needs to be on the microphone, so we can hear you.
Yeah, come to the microphone.
Oh, that's okay. I'm Carol Betham, 519 Oldham Street, Kent, Kent. I was wondering, at last month's meeting, you said we were doing something for the volunteer firemen, money-wise, or what is it that we're doing for them?
That was a property tax rebate for the volunteer firefighters based on the hours of service that they perform annually.
Okay.
So it would apply to the Homenville and Plymouth firefighters who own property here in Plymouth Township, and they would receive a percentage property tax rebate retroactive to 2023. And that percentage will depend upon the number of hours they spend responding to calls and training and just administrative and serving the township as volunteers.
I'm very happy for that. Now, you also said we're giving money to other volunteer organizations at the meeting.
Well, during budget time, there are youth sports organizations who appear before the Poxon Recreation Board, and they discuss why they would like funds from the township to support youth sport programs
Okay.
that serve Plymouth Township boys and girls.
Good. One other thing, we're giving Plymouth Ambulances $65,000. Last year, we gave them $55,000. The year before that, we gave them nothing because of the shenanigans that was going on, and you said they were going to be audited. Why do we give them money when they make money? Soon as they pull out the door, it's a thousand dollars right there.
It's been quite a few years. It's been many years since they had trouble with people taking money that didn't belong to them. But that's 10 years at least, or more, or more, maybe 15, 20 years ago. It's a long time ago. It really has been that long. Yeah. So last year, I would say, you know, after that whole episode and, you know, what that was dealt with, then we started giving them money again. I mean, they come each year at budget time, too, and they explain what their needs are. And it is a function of government to provide emergency medical services. So we're very lucky to have the Plymouth ambulance and...
But there's no shenanigans or nothing?
Not right now, no. And that's been a long time, a long time ago.
Thank you.
Time flies, doesn't it? Anybody else from the public like to address us tonight? Ask any questions? All right. Well, I thank you all for coming. Nothing else, we will adjourn this meeting and go into executive session. Thank you all.